Okay, everybody, we're going to call the December 2 regular meeting of the Southampton Village Planning Board to order.
I have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, everyone. If you could just silence your cell phones. Hope we don't have any eruptions and we can get through this as fast as possible. That would be great. We'll start with the tennis court applications, which we covered a little bit in the work session last Monday, beginning with the Halsey family on 11 Halsey Path.
This is a property where there is no house on it yet, but apparently there was an ARB meeting on November 27th, so this is a application, the tennis court will be built, I guess at the same time that the house would be built. I've had a couple notes on this. One of the things is that they have a plan.
I mean, before we start, is the applicant here? Who's the applicant?
Okay, I might have to communicate this information to the applicant, but they are specifying a privet hedge, and I'm not sure if it's existing or proposed, and there is one type of privet that is considered invasive, so we want to steer them away from that type. And they also specify a five-foot staggered evergreen hedge, but they don't say what type, and they don't specify the number of plants that they're proposing.
Did you get a package on this?
We don't have a package.
This is one that was submitted last week.
Last week.
Oh, we did.
But if the applicant's not here, we don't even really need to go any farther.
Okay, that's fine. There's a few other things we need drainage details and coverage calculations.
You could review it in the absence of the applicant, just to move it along.
The note, you'll transfer the information to the applicant?
I will send a memo to the applicant with these items.
So they can fix it for the work next session.
Yes, and maybe you should make mention of the fact that we can call work session.
Do that at the end.
Okay.
Oh, you better mention it then.
Okay, so we'll do it at the beginning. The next regular work session would be December 27th, I think.
Yeah, but we're putting it on.
And we're going to move that to, if the board agrees with me, which they better, to, we're going to combine the work session and the regular session to January 6th. So there will be no work session on December 27th, there will be a combined session on January 6th, beginning at 5:30. Motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So don't show up here on the 27th, because nobody will be here. Okay, back to biz. The next tennis court would be the Alex Roper 1690 Meadow Lane. Is there an applicant for that? John Bennett.
I think the board was, I wasn't here, but Lisa, Cory from Interscience, and Tim Judd from my office were here at the work session. I think there was some open items, there was further indication of the plant, the change in the size of the plants, there was a request for an amended cross-section, and submitting the ZDA decision. I think that was all taken care of today by Lisa Cory. So you have the, the zoning board of appeals, as they sometimes do, just Rick DePietrus just dictates the decision, so it shows up in their minutes. So we've given you a copy of the minutes and a copy of the, all of the items that both the board and Kathy had requested. I think the only outstanding thing is you understandably wanted the Raner Group to break out the separate drainage calcs for the tennis court, so if you can get that, so if you could just, I guess, if you could just pick it over until the January meeting, I'm sure we'll have it for you in time for that.
So if, if you could, if these are, if these come anytime in the meantime, because we're doing a combined work session and planning board meetings, if they could email to Aldo and...
Well, you have, you have all this.
Just the drainage counts.
Oh, just the drainage counts?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, I'll get those, yeah, okay. I'll get that to you.
Bi- channel is fine, if you can do that in advance, so we can review them, and then we'll review the rest of this in the meantime, if there's anything missing.
Excellent. That works fine. Okay, thanks.
Any further? No. Okay, moving along. The Brian Brill Tennis Court Application 408 First Neck Lane.
Let's see, I think there were quite a few requests on that. Oh, no, 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 I'm just, on the tennis court. Hopefully you got an email of Ed Hollander's plans, Kathy?
Mm-hmm.
Which we did. And then the other, only other thing, and then if you were, you wanted test hole location and details, which that got delivered today as well, but you should have that in your packet, the sliding hole with the test hole detail and the location of it, which is just to the west of the tennis court. I didn't hear of any problem with that in terms of the, of the depth to groundwater. So the only, the only thing is, I guess on this, and I'll obviously leave it up to you and your counsel whether or not you can do this. We had a hea, bless you, we had a hearing at, the hearing was held on the October, at the October zoning board of appeals. There was no opposition, and there was a letter of support from the neighbor to the south. There was no negative comment whatsoever on the board. It's a fairly typical application for a waterfront tennis court, a tennis court on a waterfront property, the parcel to the south benefits from a tennis court 90 feet from First Neck Lane. I guess I was wondering whether or not you would consider approving it subject to zoning board of appeals approval, and give us an extra month, another anxious to get going when they can. And I just, all I can do is ask, but whatever you want to do is, as I understand, but again, there's no negative comment, a lot of support from the neighbor, and, and the neighbor to the south, the neighbor to the south has a tennis court that's 90 feet from First Neck Lane, I would, I never want to be overly optimistic on anything that it seems like this is the sort of matter.
What's the setback on this court, John?
The setback on this court is proposed, the setback proposed right now is 592 feet to the lot, although we did ask the board, the zoning board, to entertain both relief for the varying, for the court, and the lot exists now.
Yeah, what's the setback from the pond, though?
Oh, from the, from the, oh, God. It's like, you know, wow.
It's probably 700 feet or something like that?
1,200 is the whole run, 700.
But you're 90 feet off the front yard after the subdivision?
After the subdivision.
So you're asking for 10-foot relief off the...
No, it's, either way, it's in the front yard. That's the only belief I'm asking for. It meets the front yard accessory setback, even for the proposed subdivision, and of course, it, you know, and it meets, amply meets the front yard setback, accessory setback for the lot as it is now, but as you know, you can't have an accessory structure in the front yard. So it would be nice if you could grant it sub, the zoning board of appeals approval, but, you know, I'm not going to jump up and stamp my feet too much if you feel uncomfortable with that.
So what are they doing in the short term about the driveway? Are they not using this driveway on the north side of the property?
They'd have to re, they'd have to re-figure that. They'll probably just take it up the north. Well, you see, the, the main driveway comes up here, see?
Yeah.
Common driveway, they'll take it up the courtyard, and you have to re-figure it here, obviously, because the court goes through the drive. The neighbor, the neighbor to the south, understandably, their consent, I think Gil, representative, was here, was, their consent was based upon the court being in that location, you see, because it keeps it to the, to the north of them, and I can understand that.
So the driveway's going to be moving further to the north?
The driveway either will move, move to the north or move down here, but we'd like to get going with it, or maybe it'll be abandoned for some time, because there is a stone bed.
What driveway are you talking about, moving to the north?
There's a driveway, there's a paved driveway here, you see where the tennis court is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a second driveway.
It's a second driveway.
Yeah.
So the question of whether, what are they going to do with that? Are they abandoning it completely?
But there's only one driveway that goes to the road.
It's only one.
So it's just a drive that's on the property?
It's on the property, and you can have an access drive, either second, I'm not trying to be of, you know...
No, I'm just asking if they're going to go further north with that driveway.
Well, why would that be a site plan issue? They can, it's an access driveway, they can do it as an out of right.
They can't, they're not going out north.
Sure they can.
Why? They'll be on the property line.
No, they could, they could move the driveway, yeah, you can with an access drive, be right on the property line, you just can't park on it. The code allows...
It's just an access.
You can have an access drive, it is zero setback.
They'd probably have to move that shed.
Yeah, they'd probably move the...
The garage.
Oh, it's a root cellar.
It's a slab.
Yeah.
But I have about 20 feet between the corner of the proposed tennis court and that greenhouse and garage. So the question is, are they going to have, you know, a 12-foot driveway that goes through there? There's a fence there now, so it's just a few of these details that would be good to...
But, but, I think there's too many moving pieces, John, to approve it without even knowing what they're going to do.
I know, but wait a minute, wait a minute, let's not overanalyze this thing. If they put a court here...
You're asking us to prove something that they don't even know what they're going to do.
I think you are, if they put a court here, and they, they could move the driveway here, they could move it here, it's an access driveway, there's no setback.
Have them decide where they want to move it and then come back, but to ask us to...
I don't have, you don't have site plan authority over where they put their driveway.
Okay, we'll come back anyway, we don't have to approve it tonight.
I know you don't, I'm asking, I know you don't, I'm asking you as a courtesy to do it, I don't think you should get...
How so, we don't have the finished plan?
I don't think you should get hung up over things you don't have jurisdiction of, that's all. But you guys, do what you want. I guess that's enough, thanks.
Anybody else have any feeling about this?
By the way, this root cellar is gone, this root cellar on the property, this root cellar here, thank you, this root cellar is gone.
There's a tree to remain on here.
Excuse me?
On this plan, if you look at L. 1.1, there's an interesting tree to remain north of the tennis court. We're going to go through the tree.
Why don't we just come back?
Take Kathy. We actually should make a motion at the request of the owner to adjourn the Roper 1690 Meadow Lane to the, to the January meeting, which we didn't do.
I'll second that.
Would you say, you understand my point, okay? You could approve this tomorrow, you could approve this site plan in this location, and the day after you approved it and it was built, you could move this driveway without anybody's concern or anybody saying anything about it the next day. That's why I don't think it's an issue, just so everyone understands my thinking on it, not being flipped or anything like that. You can have an access driveway without, no matter what anyone says, you can have an access driveway anywhere on the property line, that's all.
So that was a second on Roper? Because we didn't do Roper first.
So can we have a vote on Roper? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, at the request of the applicant, to adjourn the Brian Brill 408 First Neck Lane until the January meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the final one to be Jeffrey and Nancy Tepper, 6 Halsey Farm Drive.
This was discussed at some length at the work session, and I think the board was generally comfortable with it, they did ask, we did ask for a few corrections, clarifications, and modifications on it, and I think as of today, we're able to achieve all of those. I did submit earlier today a test hole log showing a depth of over 20 feet to groundwater, and since then, I've had the surveyors actually locate it on the, on the site plan and the radius map, and I have 10 copies of that, which I'll... In case I didn't have that in time, I did get from Joe Ringer's office a copy of the filed subdivision map, because it turns out there was a test hole dug on the adjacent lot to this lot that showed a depth, they went down 17 feet and didn't even hit groundwater, so there's, it's clear that there's quite a depth before they hit that, so you hit groundwater, so that shouldn't be any kind of an issue. And then there were some notes on the plans done by the architect, there was a question of having a minimum height of a fence and a depth, and we changed it so that the exact heights have been fixed. I asked them also to review the drainage calculations, which the architect did, and he claims that there's actually, from his computations, more than enough drainage capacity to handle a two-inch rainfall event. Now, there's one thing that I noticed when I got these today, again, they were federal express to me, the tennis court plan and details drawing shows three leaching pools, and inadvertently, there was an extra one shown on the landscape plan, so that, that would actually be the leech. So I said, what I could do, I'm authorized to cross one of them off, and I could certainly submit a revised plan, which I'll probably have tomorrow, but I would hope that that in and of itself wouldn't hold up in approval. That was merely a drafting error on his part. I apologize for the late submission, but you know, we, you know, we worked last week, we found on the Tuesday, and the editor, who works on Wednesday, so...
We were situated in the same position with the review, that I had my landscaping person look at the plan, and she says that the fountain grass, some of the varieties of fountain grass are considered highly invasive, so we'd be to specify that?
The brand new, Al? I'm not sure which one that is. Because this is six.
She recommends a specific variety.
This is six.
I'm sure that would be no problem.
Back on the tennis court.
What's your...
Which, which grass, but there's other, there's other varieties, unfortunately, well, maybe fortunately, she's in labor right now, so she won't be back in the office for a while, but I can have somebody else look at it.
Does that, does that mean this will hold us up, or could we do it subject to substituting that? I'm sure that would be fine, just something...
So that would be another modification to the landscape plan, I'm okay with that. The planning board is...
Which is, we're going to, we're going to substitute different type of fountain grass?
Specific type of grass that's non-invasive, and in that case, the additional leaching pool could be taken off of the one piece of the plan as well, then.
And now, though, you went through the calcs?
Yeah, we got three, like, things.
So I think with that, I know you approved things subject to the, I would hope that you could do that, probably within a day or two, I'll have those plans to the planning department.
Okay, they got the three things I saw in the, in the work session, so...
I'll make sure it changes.
Okay with me. Okay with you, Kathy.
I'll make the motion to approve the application of Jeffrey and Nancy Tepper pending revised
drawings that show the negation of one leaching ring and the substitution of the fountain grass.
I'll second that.
Sounds great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'll mail it to anyone else. Thanks, and all good.
This is the public hearing for Pelosi, Otto, and Roller, Application 502039.
Mr. Chairman, if we could second call that, we're still waiting for the architect to come.
Can we move you back one, one or two slots and start something else?
That'd be great, thank you, Jeff.
Is the applicant for Susan Lilly White's application here, representative?
It's the second month in a row that no one has been here, exactly. Why don't I write a letter to the applicant? I'm not sure that they're aware of what's going on or not going on, so I'll write a letter.
Yeah, they had a landscape architect who...
Is it, we're not, is it the landscape or the engineering drawings, do you know?
I think he had to do something with the bay window that, I think he had to go to CBA, maybe, to...
Or the ARB.
He had to go to the ARB, according to my notes.
So he might not be through that.
I think they have ARB approval for that.
For the window?
Yeah, like, three, three months ago.
Yeah, but they haven't been back here since, they were last year on the 7th of October.
Right, I'll check into it and then get a letter.
In the subdivision review, adjourn the OIA until January, and that's just going to carry forward?
Yeah, I spoke with John on this, Bennett, on this, he says that there is still an outstanding issue the applicant has with the, the bond, or, excuse me, the...
Park fee.
The park fee payment, that he had had a conference with the mayor, the mayor said for the applicant to write a letter to the mayor's office addressing this issue. I don't know what the trustees are going to do, because they probably will come back to the board for an opinion, and I don't know, I think the appraisal several years ago is now stale.
Yeah, but even so, I mean, I, I, this is, and again, this is my own property, but it was a $28,000 recommended park fee, $28,000 for a park fee. I had a client that subdivided two properties at the end of Captain's Neck Lane, they eventually ended being, being sold for $24 million, and this park fee was $92,000. Everybody knows where this property is, so without being specific about some of my conversations with the trustees, I think they thought that it was a little...
Little much.
Out of line, so I'm trying to work that out, I, you know, you guys all know where this property is, it's on the corner of Windmill Lane and White Street, the two residential lots that are being created are rather small, so I'm just trying to work this out, you don't have the, I don't think you have the authority to do anything other than recommending it's the trustees that set the park fee. I'm trying to work it out, it's a...
And it looks great.
I think, thank you.
The work you're doing on it, make, really cleaned up the corner, it really looks great.
I really do appreciate that, and from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate that. So I'm trying to work out something other than what I would consider just an unfair park fee for that, so I appreciate your patience.
So I'm making a motion to...
Adhere for all purposes.
Adhere for all purposes to the January 2014 meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I might add, sometimes it's, you know, what's the expression, maybe about the shoes of the, of the cobbler's children?
Like, the fixed laugh?
So I'm trying to get there, but I apologize, and thank you for your patience.
The next application with Harconin LLC and Atreades LLC, we adjourn?
We adjourn that at the work session.
Carry that forward to January.
Let me, let me go back then, if I may, I didn't realize, again, I wasn't here, Lisa and my staff was, I was wondering whether, from the way I see it, even though there's additional information requested, and I think all the information that has been requested is, is a fair request, nevertheless, the application as submitted was complete. Is there any reason why you couldn't set a public hearing date? Do you mean, I, I think...
What do you have on that?
Everything that you've, everything that you've requested is in the works and is a very reasonable request, but the, the application as submitted was complete. Do you remember why we adjourned it?
The notes right here.
Because of the historic, I think it's something, because of it's in a historic district?
You submitted the AAF.
Do you remember, Kathy, at the work session?
It's a type one, and it needs to be coordinated, coordinated review needed to be done.
Is it type one because...
Because it's a historic.
In the historic district.
It's in the historic district.
Oh, okay. Does that mean that you can't set a public hearing?
Usually we would have some degree of review on the type one before we would set a public hearing.
Okay, if that's your, if that's your custom...
I mean, they can, it can be done, but I would say it's a little threshold premature at the moment.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay. Let's keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Top Two Holdings LLC, 200 David White's Lane.
I guess we're on for a work session, since we just submitted this last Wednesday, and we have the amended plan. The last time we were here for the work session, we had a, a separate site plan, and we decided to go back and do two, two sites together, along with the subdivisions, as part of the subdivision.
Is this the one with the, the curb and the...
Yes.
Didn't we vote on that? We didn't?
Pre-education, not a big part.
Pre-education, and we've made some changes, the most significant of which is the entrance, and you can see here, the entrance is going to be here, it's, it's an entrance and exit, and there was some concern about the concrete in the back, and the reason that we have that is because of the tractor trailers that have to come in and be able to turn around. So we have it set up so that they can come in and make their turnaround and come through and then out through that access, and it was the only way that we could get it done. We've tried all different ways of having one down the center, but we're just, we're not able to do it engineering-wise, so that's the biggest change, other than we have both buildings proposed now on the site plan, so we'll do it all together instead of doing one and coming back with the other. It still has the 50-foot transitions above her under 2006 approval. Other than that, we have both applications pending, the subdivision and the site plan.
Okay, so that's different than what we have in the file?
This came in last Wednesday, so it should be updated.
This is 2042?
It is November 26th.
This is the one that, this is the one that I have, I think this is the one we all have, this one.
It's two separate...
Are you looking at the subdivision map or the site plan?
The subdivision review.
Right, well, the site plan is what I'm referring to now, that's the...
No, the case it was called was the subdivision.
We don't have the map you have, Rooney.
The, the case it was called is subdivision.
Yeah, this is the subdivision, not the site plan.
It's the subdivision, not site.
We're on the same map that I have, I was told it was put in last Wednesday, but I'll make sure that...
We don't have that map.
Maybe it's under, is it at the end? Yeah, we have it, it's at the back, though, because it's under, it's under site plan review. We have that, but it's, it's on a different heading.
Maybe we can ask the staff to just keep them together, the subdivision and site plan, as they need to.
For the sake of clarity, Rooney, in the future, I think it's better to, even if it's the same map, designate one site plan and one subdivision.
They just...
It might be stamped, it gives use later on, the county clerk or something else.
The folder doesn't have one, do you have an extra one there?
It should, it's not in the bottom?
No, it's not.
Oh, I have, I think I have one.
It's dated August, you have one dated, no?
I got one that's received November 26th.
There's not one in the file, unless they set up, did they set up in the file by January?
I don't think, I don't think I have any file.
Are you saying to use the site plan review for the subdivision review?
Yes.
Be better if we were only looking at one, right?
I take it all... I tell you ultimately, Steve, you want to separate the two.
Well, unfortunately, this...
Then we'll provide two separate maps. They should revise it, have one subdivision map and one site map.
They've got it on two different files and they didn't set it.
And right now, the driveway in the parking area on the subdivision map doesn't match.
Yeah, at least it needs to match. It should match on two different designated maps. Well, we're gonna do a drainage easement, we'll have a cross-access easement. They're obviously gonna have to work together, and we'll do it, you know, good planning. There'll be a drainage easement and a cross-access easement for both lots.
This one's a... This is a subdivision, but we gotta get a different, I think...
Did you submit an EAF? So you only need to, I would say you only need one that has both actions on it. Is that correct? We don't want to... Should be together.
So we'll submit the EAF. I don't know if you want to set it for a public hearing. Wait till it comes in?
We really just, we just, you know, we haven't had a chance to even look at this yet.
We submitted on Wednesday, I didn't expect that we would be here tonight, and then I saw it on the schedule, so...
So this is, on the subdivision, we'll make a motion to adjourn to January?
Right, and we'll submit an EAF.
Okay, alright. I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn the PEP 2 Holdings LLC to the January 2014 meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Internet, could you make a documentation there that this should on the agenda be two different listings?
It is.
It is.
It's on last, it's on the third page, for site plan review.
Okay.
Yep.
Mitchell Family, 180 Great Plains Road.
This is sort of unusual, because this is a subdivision that you actually approved 10 years ago. And for a number of reasons, my client never implemented it. There are a number of reasons my client subsequently to your approval died, and his estate wound up with it. So now, basically, we're trying to start all over again, but do the exact same subdivision that you guys approved, conditionally finally approved in 2003. So that's what I submitted, was the, actually a copy of the 2003 resolution, and the subdivision map, which is exactly the same map that you already approved. So we would hope that you could, at your earliest convenience, schedule a public hearing.
So we should have the building department's file from the previous application. And we need to make a note that there's a new EAF form. This short EAF is no longer valid.
Is there a date on that?
I have the file, Kathy.
We have a short EAF form?
Is the old file there? Oh, good. Yeah, this is, I mean, this is just, there's a new file that needs to be repaired.
I could certainly submit that. I would hope that we could schedule for a public hearing anyway, at your earliest convenience. This is a little unusual in that this is something, as I say, that you've already looked back and went through sketch plans and approved, leaving the health department. Well, the way it was, the way you handled it in '03 was that it would, the way you normally do it, as long as it's under common ownership, they could, the buildings could remain. But at such times, they, one was sold to a third party, you'd have to do something with the cottage. In the previous decision, there was a provision for a performance bond. But I think we've gotten away from that, more to the approach of letting these things remain as long as the same family, or entity controls both lots, and we would do the same thing here.
Gil, the only problem we're experiencing with things like this is institutional memory. It's not that the board, I think, is not cognizant of the needs of the community and people's individual wishes and desires and plans, but it's become increasingly difficult to track these things.
One of the ways we have tracked them, there are two ways we've done it, and several of them, as you know, is one is to require the filing of a declaration of community restrictions. That puts everybody on notice, and also to notify the COO. So if you do both of those, that's about as good a thing.
It's difficult for the planning board to assure that the CO is issued in the fashion that the board might approve, again, because it doesn't have any further authority once it's approved here, but the covenant and restriction could be considered.
Right, and that's, you've done that in at least two cases I can think of, and the clients have been happy to do it, and I'm sure this client would be too. But what I'm saying is, you could even, you could do both, if you want.
Yeah, we can work on it.
You might want to do both, that'd be fine with me. And by the way, there is a certificate of occupancy that was issued in May of 2011 that covers everything that's there. So I can give you that too.
Yeah, that'd be good if you could submit it to the file.
But we, I think, I would suggest we handle those other buildings the way I've just discussed and find that.
Anything else? Schedule it, a public hearing?
I mean, these are two oversized lots, and I don't see this being a complicated matter. And I don't have any objection, but it's, you know, it's up to me.
I just would wonder if the EAF needs to be first reviewed, but...
Well, you got, as I say, 10 years ago, you guys did review it, and we submitted an EAF then, of the same, we exchanged EAF.
Yeah, we understand. So like a surveyor, you ask him about a month later, they still have to resurvey the property. How much of a time crisis is this for the applicant?
It's not critical, but if you could, basically what I did was, in the EAF, I took the information I used for the other application. It really didn't, nothing's changed, so I mean...
Whatever wetlands there are dried up by now.
Gil, could you grab that bike and just move it over so we can all hear?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, maybe just stand next to it.
Okay, sure, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Can you move it over in front of the table? By you?
Like in front of the table?
Over here.
Yeah, so at least somebody, at least when you come up, you can put your stuff on the table and talk.
Okay. Is that better?
Great.
Okay. So if you look at the survey, you say nothing survey-wise has changed. The buildings, the improvements are all the same as they were in 2003. We had the surveyors go out and make sure that there were no changes.
Do you have a copy of the health department's SCAP plan by chance?
Not, I can get it for you, because we couldn't have gone to the... Oh, I don't want to take you, wait, this is it. I don't want to take the time, I can't... I'll get it for you, I can get it for you.
See no issue with scheduling a meeting?
Okay.
That would be mightily appreciated.
So I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant on... What are we looking at here? Mitchell? To adjourn to the January 2014 meeting for a public hearing?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Just note that the public hearing is being scheduled for that meeting also. It's adjourned to in January 14. And scheduled for a public hearing at that meeting.
Is it online? It is definitely on the DTC website. And I thought they were doing it out of the Department, but I found out today that they won't. I'm gonna call them again tomorrow, but it's eight pages instead of two pages, but...
Okay.
It's for the short form.
Okay.
And I think the short form is fine.
Okay, good, we'll take care of that, thank you.
Want to just, while you're up there, Gil, address the Punnit application?
Yeah, I sure will. This is another one you've seen before. This is the property that you granted site plan approval for a couple of times. Most recently, we got that little strip of land that connected the back of this property to Bellows Court. So what we're proposing to do is basically to separate the property of the two lots, which would match where the zoning is. So the site plan itself wouldn't change, but the rear part would then be a separate lot that could be sold as a residential lot, and the front lot could be sold as an office district lot. So pretty much, it's the same, it's basically the same site plan, only we're proposing to divide it where it makes sense. And I think we all, always mentioned that this is something we were gonna try to do, especially after we got that little piece of land to Bellows Court. And I did give you a copy, not only of the subdivision, but also a copy of the new site plan, so we can see that it's, they match. And then we got, yeah, it's everything that you guys, everything that we wanted, we got rid of that easement. We were happy to, it took quite a lot of time to get that. Yeah, as a site plan. Now, as I'm now here for the subdivision. So they get access already then to it. We got Health Department approval for the entire development. And what typically, you know, what typically happens with the Health Department is that once we get sketch plan approval, secretly, you don't go to the Health Department. You don't normally do it before sketch plan. We might, but we'll, we'll... We'll come to it. I think it might be. But we'll look into that. I know that we had to develop what we had there. I think we, I don't even think we needed any fine balance credits or development rights. But I know the Health Department did approve the office building and also the residence. We did get Health Department approval for that, and I can look to that. So again, we're at the point of seeing if we can have a public hearing on this.
And so we're creating a, Kathy, we're creating a zoning correct lot, but not a Health Department?
Exactly, we were just asking where to get the... It doesn't meet the Health Department standards under Sub-County Center.
Then 20,000?
I have to check.
20,000 minimum?
I have to check if it was 20,000 or 40,000. I think that area is 20,000.
Is this exempt from that?
As interesting as it's, I haven't really thought this through that deeply, but we've gotten approval from the Health Department to build the house and also the office.
On one lot?
On one lot. So it'd be the same, exactly the same flow, whether it's one lot or two.
But wasn't the lot that's purchased shown on the 72 map, or what was the Health Department map? Or it would have been...
Look, it's all, it currently is and has been one lot. Right, so now...
Oh, I see, what he purchased then was what? He purchased some land in addition to this?
Yeah, a little strip of land.
A little strip, okay, I've got that confused, okay.
So that's an interesting point, that's, if we have to argue it at the Health Department, I think that's a good point. You know, if they've approved it as it is, there's not one drop of water additional.
Do you have the map that shows them approving both?
Excuse me?
Do you have that map that shows that they approve both?
Yeah, that they approved the site plan, I can get you that, yeah. Not, yes, I can get you that, sure. That's bizarre, it's the same amount of flow, it's the same, it's the same, everything is exactly the same.
Right.
Anything else?
No. Hoping for a public hearing scheduled, that's it for me.
I think we gotta get that information and we can do that.
We're in the same spot with the EAF as well.
Right, I made a note about that.
Want to do a little more digging on this one.
Okay, so we won't, maybe next month we can schedule a hearing?
Right.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks very much.
I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant on the, our John Punnit, 220 Hampton Road, to adjourn for all purposes to the January meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Do you want to go back to...
Mr. Gil Martin, are you ready to go? Great. So this is going back to the Pelosi application, new site plan.
Good evening, the applicant, David Gil Martin Jr., for Alfred's 50 Station Road. And then I asked Charles Keane to come up. We appeared at the work session, and we've made some tweaks to the plan over the last couple of weeks. I'll have him describe those changes.
Now you probably want to get the microphone closer to you.
Unless you actually want to bring that easel up right in the front here, so we could see.
Face the board?
Yeah, I think so. You guys can see that, right?
We can, but I think it's better if he has it where it was, so that the audience can see it.
You read it? Better that he has where?
Where it was, so that the members of the audience can see.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you gotta go back.
Just put it back where it was.
Sorry.
It's better where it was, Mr. Keane.
I got overruled, if you want to move it back.
You're gonna have to go to the gym afterwards. Oh, I got that thing working.
Good.
Nobody's using it. Great.
Okay, the last time we were before the board, the proposal for this application was to put an addition on the existing building. That addition has since been removed. Again, in several work sessions, we've adjusted the parking. We're providing 15, I'm sorry, 16 parking spaces. The building will be rehabbed. I have a rendering of a proposal of what the building would look like. The siding would be cedar shakes, asphalt architectural shingles, some dormers placed on the building, and a lot of windows, so to make it more residential, sort of in its appearance, not as commercial. I do have drawings with me tonight. The board had requested some of the signage identifications, so I have those with me. I can submit to the board. Landscaping, you can see from the site plan, we propose screen planting along the south, east and west property lines, street trees along County Road 37. And that's about it.
Just add that we've tried to be responsive to the board's requirements, and I think we've met and done all the changes that you've requested over the past couple of months. If you have any more questions, we'll try and answer.
Kathy, did they get a copy of this?
Not yet, I wanted you to look at it and see if there was anything else. But I basically have stated at the work session that there were some minor items that most of the substantive comments had been addressed in this plan from a site plan perspective, but there were some items. And the plan that I looked at before I provided to the applicant, this is basically a letter to the applicant, so... So if you're okay with it, I can copy. One of the, one of the items that... One of the, one of the items that really hasn't been discussed is the hours of operation in the site plan, that has come up before, it's nothing in the code that, that states as far as I can find, limiting the hours of operation for, so, so, something that should be discussed and considered.
So, so these nine items are what we discussed at the work session?
That's my list, yeah.
Okay. And then you have revised plans?
I have not received a, an official copy of the comments, so, I mean, I, I will address them as soon as I, I get the, the comments.
Aldo, did you have any further questions for the sanitary system?
Not right now, no.
Not right now.
Aldo, did we have a total gallonage that's supposed to be going out, like an outflow? I know they talk about, the water goes out, gets filtered, gets processed, comes back into the building, do we have a, a number of what the discharge is gonna be daily on that site, as far as water is concerned?
I, I don't know, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
There was, there was an estimate, I have to pull that up.
Okay.
Yeah, the estimate was 35,000 gallons per day. Now, I had, I had contacted the health department regarding, there was a question of whether this was in a, an area where it would affect public water supply, and the response that I got back from the health department was that it is not within a range of a capture zone for a public water supply well. They did note that it was within the 10 to 25 year contributing area to the Atlantic Ocean, for what that's worth, that shows up on that, in this, in this little yellow bubble area. I think I sent this around previously, this was back in September.
I also think the DEC will be sending notices to the water authority on the same issue, and if they wish, they could check and see if it's gonna affect any of their water.
Does any other, anybody have any more questions for the applicant? Thank you, gentlemen, I think there are members of the public who now would like to comment on the application.
Will we get a copy of the letter from?
Yeah, Kathy, you have a copy for them?
I'm gonna have Aldo. I'm gonna get a copy.
Still not used to be calling a member of the public yet, but we'll get used to it. My name is Fred Thiel, I'm an attorney with Tommy Latham Shea and Kelly Cuadraro, and I represent Wesley Olco, who is a neighbor of this particular project. And the, the point I wanted to bring to the board tonight is really the issue of compliance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. It is our position that this action is an unlisted action, site plan approval, under your own code, talks about site plans that the board has to either make a negative deck or a positive deck declaration, those only happen with either a type 1 action or an unlisted action. We do not believe that this is a type 2 action. The, the project is one that may have a significant impact on the environment, and is something certainly that I think SECRE was designed to at least have the board do an environmental assessment to make that particular determination. So, I, I submitted a letter to the board today, I have, it was emailed, I brought a hard copy with me also, which I'll, I'll just submit for the record. But, the purpose of the Environmental Quality Review Act, in essence, is to make sure that when there are potential environmental impacts, that they are identified and incorporated as part of the decision-making process. And with the volume of water that is required with a project like this, and the need to treat that water and discharge that water, this is something certainly that, to, to my way of thinking, is something that needs to at least be assessed under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. I will leave it at that, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Fred, I haven't read the letter yet, but do you elucidate in the letter the specifics about why your client thinks this is a unlisted versus a type 2?
Well, the, the first thing you would have to do is, is, once you identify that, you, obviously it's an action, is, the first thing you do is to look to see if it's on the type 2 list.
Right.
And if it's not on the type 2 list, then you look and you determine whether it's a type 1 or an unlisted.
The type 2 list?
I don't, I don't believe it is on the type 2 list, the two things that, to me, are closest to that would be number one, if this was an in-kind replacement, I think this is not an in-kind replacement with what was there before. I know there's litigation on, as to whether or not this was a change of use or not a change of use. I don't think it matters under SECRE whether this is a change of use or not a change of use. I could have a house, my house could burn down, I could build another house, it would still be the same use, but if there are different aspects of that house, it's not in-kind. So, number one, I don't believe it's, it's in-kind. The second, there's a second provision on the type 2, the state type 2 list, that talks about buildings of 4,000 square feet or less for commercial purposes, and I would submit that if this was a dry use, and it was just a building, with, without the type of use for a laundromat, and the discharge of, treatment of water that's necessary, if it were a dry use, this might qualify for a type 2 action, but, you know, there are a number of agencies that are involved here, there are a number of permits, there are a number of applications that have to be filed, but action, and what is an action, is singular, and it looks, an action looks at all of the aspects of, of the project. And I, I don't think you can separate or segment out the fact that to have a laundromat, you have to have a substantial, as was mentioned, up to 35,000 gallons capacity for treatment, and it, it is, you know, that which I think is the, the major focus here, certainly with a use like this in that location, perhaps issues with regard to traffic and traffic generation might be of interest also, but tonight I'm, I'm really kind of focusing on the impact of water.
And, and why would that not be, why is that an issue for this board as opposed to the health department or the DEC?
Well, I think it's an issue for all of the agencies, as you look at the action, if you look at the village zoning code, and the zoning code that's been in effect for many, many years, one of the primary purposes of the village zoning code, of the town zoning code, has been protecting water quality. If you look at the purposes of site plan approval, it says, one of the things you have to look at is the protection of natural resources, which includes water. So, I think that, that it's well within the purview of the zoning code, well within the concerns that the, the planning board has, which is the protection of water quality. And even though, when it comes to the, the technical requirements of the treatment system, it may be another agency that has greater expertise on that, that may be the case, but that's why under SECRE, you have coordinated review, so that if there are a number of agencies, all of them are involved, and all of them lend their expertise to the SECRE process. But in determining initially, and right now we're just determining initially whether or what type of action this is, I, I think that it, if you look at the statute and the purpose of the statute, it, there, at, at a minimum, this is an unlisted action that should at least require the preparation of an environmental assessment.
The reason I ask this is because this has already been in front of this board for a long time, it's generated one lawsuit and as it is, these are the same arguments that were made previously, the applicant took exception to these, I'm sure there's gonna be a very strong argument for the applicant that this is a type 2. I haven't seen your letter, but all I can say is that it would be, your client would be well advised to make that letter as detailed as possible, now let me finish, and not just simply make the allegation that this is a, a type, an unlisted versus that, but refer to the sections, refer to court cases, and any other documentation we've got.
My letter's four pages, I can generate more if you'd like.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying that how, it should be as detailed as possible on the.
Well, I, I think the letter has a fair amount of detail for it, if there's anything further, you know, I certainly would, would be willing to provide further information, I, I didn't wanna, I, I know the board had the, the letter, I didn't wanna.
Well, I haven't seen it, again, maybe four pages, but again, it's how specific it is, and I'll.
Well, we were, the, the letter cites specific provisions of the village zoning code and, and Part 617 regulations.
Very good, thank you.
I, I would second Mr. Robinson's comments, in that this isn't the first time we've talked about this, it's been going on for quite some time, and, and in the course of those conversations, we've discussed the 4,000 square foot limit, we have talked about the, DEC approval of the sanitary system, this is really the first time that the plan's been absolutely final, it's, it's changed quite a bit over the course of the time, so it was very hard during the shifting nature of the plan, and it's gotten considerably smaller and considerably more like what it used to be than it was when it started, for us to say, okay, here's, here it is, this is gonna require a, a SECRE review or not, so now we're at the point where we can take your letter, examine it further, and, and you know, see if it merits the, the kind of review you're, you're talking about or not.
Right, that's all I request, is that you, you, you take a hard look, like SECRE requires you to do, and look at some of the issues that we've raised.
Thanks for using the microphone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Bregman?
Good evening, board members, Mr. Chairman and board members, I'm Jeff Bregman, 15 Railroad Avenue, East Hampton, New York, and my client's Ralph Machio, who's here, who's a, a neighboring businessman, as you know, owns a laundromat in the village. I agree with what Fred is telling you, and I was kind of, you know, although there's been some discussion about SECRE along the way, this application has kind of bumped along in an incomplete fashion, so I've been sort of waiting, this is really the first opportunity I have to actually see the site plan. I had, up until today, I know you've discussed it in work session, but up until today, I didn't even know the number of machines, and we've been kept in the dark on the number of machines that he's gonna put in for, I don't know, well over a year. So, I mean, I'm happy to have the site plan, but I'm looking at it for the first time today, and I'll, I'm also gonna get the letter into you. But I, I think what, what's missing in the analysis, you know, the architect comes up and he presents this very nicely colored plan, and it's got a gray parking lot, and it's got a yellow building, and it's got a lot of green on it, and, but the elephant in the room that nobody's talking about is this really big system, this really big system that does not exist on the property, this is a big piece of equipment, this is a structure that's going in the ground, it's a structure as defined under your zoning code, and the applicant would like you to just put blinders on and go, okay, you're just looking at a little building in a parking lot, we even moved it, you know, we moved it a little, I think that, I think they may have moved some spaces out of this green area, but I have to check that against that old zoning board. But the, the real, the real issue in this case largely is what's going on with water and what that system is, and it's a major system. And I think what Fred is saying is something I agree with, which is, when you start to analyze what is the action, the action is, is the subject of your review, you are obligated under SECRE to include every single aspect of that action, so it doesn't matter that that system is gonna be reviewed by the health department or the DEC. It often happens in cases in front of planning boards, that other boards or other agencies are involved, sometimes they haven't even yet made the applications to the agencies, sometimes they have, but you're still in the driver's seat here, and SECRE doesn't allow you to cut up projects into little bitty pieces, they call it segmentation, cause it's like segmenting, you know, a worm, and they, they have this policy for a very simple common sense reason, they understand that if you segment out portions of the project, that you're not really going to do an accurate view of what the impacts from the project are. And, and the way this is now being presented, and it took us a year and a half to get here, is, is, is to present it in a segmented fashion, cause they're not talking about the, the water purification system, or the fact that they're gonna be pumping out 35,000 gallons a day, that's a lot of water coming out, and it also raises the issue in my mind, again, this is the first time I've seen the numbers of the machines, what kind of traffic it's gonna take to generate that kind of outflow from the 45 machines that they're running, and, I mean, I'm gonna go back and check the, the Transportation Engineers manual to see how they, how they calculate trip generation for a laundromat with that number of machines, and it's certainly something you should be looking at, but the, but the real point is that when you begin to look at the environmental impacts, or where do we start to look at the environmental impacts, you've gotta look at the entire action, the complete action, even though a portion of it is gonna be reviewed elsewhere, you're still in driver's seat, it's still the Village of Southampton, and it's your job to really assess that impact. And I, I agree with Fred that the language of your own site plan review statute strongly suggests that it's not, it can't be a type 2 action, you're requiring site plan review, and it says, in order for that application to be complete, you have to have either issued a negative declaration or a positive declaration, which suggests that a site plan application is inherently an unlisted action, it's inherently an unlisted action, but you can't, I don't think it's fair for the applicant to stand in front of you and go, we're just rebuilding this nice, beautiful little building, we're gonna put cedar shakes on it, and that's the end of the deal, when he's putting a major new water purification system underground. And the other thing is that the amount of gallonage coming out of it strongly suggests a huge amount of traffic. So, I'm gonna submit a letter as well, it'll be detailed, and, you know, I, I think that that decision is gonna be sort of a gateway decision, now that you finally have this complete application, I think, you know, as you get out of this, you're just getting out of the starting gate, and the first decision is gonna be, what is the action, and, you know, is, is the, the construction of this water purification system a part of the action that, that makes this not just a, a replacement of an existing building, or, or just a, a commercial building under 4,000 square feet, I just don't think you can put blinders on like that and comply with SECRE. And it's just, it's too big, and it's, common sense suggests that, that's the biggest impact of this project, is that water flow. And, so, I hope that, you know, that when we give you some more detail on it, it'll, it'll give you a little bit of a step-by-step method to proceed from the starting point, which is where we are today. Thank you.
Jeff, a couple of questions, forgive my voice, this isn't a quiz, but is, is not the litigation that's pending now, isn't, is not the major issue, that litigation, whether or not this was a type 2 or an unlisted action as originally presented to the board?
Actually, no, it, it was not. That, the, the litigation really is asking a court to determine if, we looked at the way your zoning code evolved, and the litigation presents the history of your zoning code and, and suggested to the court that at some point in the past, the Village Board of Trustees had intentionally.
Whether there was an enlargement of.
When, they had intentionally taken laundromats out as permitted uses, that's, and so, the courts really called upon to interpret your zoning code as to whether or not this is the same use or a prohibited use because of an action that the board took before your current zoning code, that suggested that they were actually striking out laundromats as permitted uses. But maybe, I should probably be more succinct, but that, but that is what the litigation's about. The, the, when we're talking about doing an impact analysis or looking at the action, that's different from looking at the zoning category, whether it's a change of use or not a change of use, because regardless of whether your zoning code says this is a change from one use to another use, the impact analysis is something that is still required under SECRE separately, and it wouldn't be resolved by that question, it would not be resolved by that question, cause you could, you could put a similar use in that would have, I, I can think of, I'm sure we could all think of a hypothetical, where you put a similar use in that's much more intensive, and SECRE requires an impact analysis. analysis that's separate and apart from that zoning question of whether this is a new use or a continuation of an old use. So I think they're, they're, they're both relevant, but you, you can't get away from doing this secret analysis. And it's, it's, I think, you know, I'm, I'm hoping I can make it clearer and not more complicated with another letter, and that you'll be able to read through both the letters and maybe a letter from the applicant. And then, you know, uh, work your way through the analysis that secret requires. It's a very common sense analysis. But I, I think the most important issue that you got to ask yourselves is what is this action? Is it just this little cedar shake building? Or is it everything on the site? And it's, it's clearly got to be everything on the site, especially when one is, you got a structure that's pumping out or purporting to clean or handle 35,000 gallons a day. I mean, that's the biggest concern, uh, that and traffic, I would think.
I, I would hope you'd address it in your letter, but, uh, and I was going to ask a question, but maybe make, let me make a more rhetorical question. That is, in your letter, would you address the issues of what specific language in the zone, in the planning code, uh, would allow this board to basically, um, deal with the definition, one of the definitions of a type two action being the in-con rehabilitation of a building, a commercial building less than 4,000 square feet? Then what is in our local planning code that would basically trump the state law saying that here's a categorization that says it's a type two action?
Yeah. I don't think it's, it's something, I think, I think your local zoning code indicates that a site plan application's an unlisted action. And Fred, when you...
Well, whether it indicates it or not, I'd just like you to put in the letter, indication is not a particularly strong verb in that context.
Well, but what I was going to go on and say is that secret itself, you know, contains sort of a step-by-step methodology for getting, making a decision about whether it's subject to secret and then going on from there and determining the significance of impacts that you see. And what I'm, what I'm saying to you is that there are other secret provisions, particularly the definition of an action and the rule against segmentation, that strongly suggests that this is not just the rehabilitation of this building. It's everything going on on the site. That includes what's underground, even if it's reviewed elsewhere. And that requires an impact analysis in an EAF Part Two. And then you make the next, then you take the next steps as to what you think, whether the impacts may cause a serious adverse impact, in which case you'd issue a positive declaration. I'm throwing a lot of lingo out. You've, I'm sure you've heard it before. But to get to that point, I think you have to look at the action and look at an EAF Part Two. And I think it's going to make your life easier and the decision easier if you have the, if you follow it step by step and have that document in front of you. So it's, it's not just your zoning code. It's other secret law.
Well, if you'd be as specific as you can, because I'm sure you're going to get quite a vehement, vehement reply from the applicant.
I've got nothing but vehement replies for a year and a half from the applicant.
You're being conned. I think it's two years.
But I am, I have to say, I'm very grateful that we at long last have an application with a site plan. I've been waiting for that for a long time. So...
Patience is rewarded.
Maybe.
Thank you. Further comment?
I guess here we go again. Couple of things. One, uh, this is a permitted use on this piece of property that we are proposing. The building inspector has determined that. The village attorney, Mr. De Petrus, has provided an opinion to that effect. And the ZBA has finally decided that. That's the law of this case, this application. And that's how you are required to move forward, whatever, lawsuit my learned colleague has filed. Um, that's the law of the case right now. Secondly, I think there's a, um, there's an issue with both of my learned colleagues' interpretation of secret. They seem to jump to a conclusion without doing the initial analysis. The first thing that you have to do as a board, and I'm sorry to bore you or re-bore you with this argument, but you have to determine what type of action is it. It'll be type one, type two, or unlisted. And I've made many of argument in front of this board prior to us reducing the size of the building and not taking advantage of the expansion, that it was a type two then. Um, we've made that argument, and we've made it thoroughly in front of you. Um, there's no provision in your zoning code that says a site plan application is something other than a type two, right? You have to go to the secret regulations, and they provide the designation. And it's clear. 617.5C7 says, "Construction or expansion of a primary accessory or pertinent non-residential structure facility involving less than 4,000 square feet of gross floor area and not involving a change in zoning or use variance consistent with local land use controls, but not radio communication." This, again, permitted use. Your land use control says we can have this use here. It's existed for years. Well, then we get some jumping up and down by my colleague saying, but wait, wait, there's water going into the ground. In 1995, secret was amended, and they had to do their own secret analysis to amend it. And all these issues were talked about. Should, should the construction or rehabilitation of something less than 4,000 square feet, and I've differed with your staff on that 4,000 square feet, but here, we're clearly under. We're rehabilitating an existing building that's under 4,000 square feet. Secret talks about that and that change and the, that part of the law, the 4,000 square foot law, I'll call it, being put into effect. And it says, "This item is intended to cover any structure facility not used for permanent or seasonal habitation, and includes the expansion of existing commercial structures and new construction of small commercial facilities. The primary issue of concern in almost all cases is the compatibility of the proposed use with existing uses. This issue should be addressed under zoning, and it should be decided prospectively before any application is received. However, since many communities have not updated their local land use control," and it goes on. The, where it's really pertinent here is it says, "The primary environmental impacts associated with these types of actions are usually infrastructure-related concerns such as traffic, stormwater drainage, and sewage disposal." All of the issues brought up by my colleagues. Um, and they, and it's, and it says, "And they do not rise to a level of significance that would require the preparation of an EIS." The only time you'd require an EIS is if you made it an unlisted action. These are the type of issues. The issues that they raise are to be vetted before this board, not through a lengthy secret process and the, and, and doing an EIS. You have the ability to do that. And, and so I just conclude saying it's a type two. I'll respond to their letters as I've responded to all this before. But I think one of the things that's happening here is just another delay tactic. Um, I would say let's just get the issues out. Whatever questions you have, we'll do our best to answer them. I think we've done a pretty good job since we've reduced the size of the building to addressing those issues. And I look forward to coming back and, and having this argument all over again. Thank you.
Any further input today? I just wanted to see if anybody else had anything else to say. Um, so we have some reading to do when you guys get your letters all in and some further study. Uh, I would say that this really, I, I agree with, that this is kind of the start rather than halfway through it. It, with, the plan is really what it is now, not what it was six months ago. So I, I can't say you've got too much of a right to be impatient with the opposition, Mr. Gilmar, and starting their arguments now because they finally have the real thing to argue against. Um, so I understand you're going to have to talk, see what they have to say, you know, we're really just at the start of this thing.
My impatience is on secret, not on issues.
That said, thank you all for your comments. And will Kathy, anything further to add to that? Aldo? No? Good.
Other than to ask that any communications addressed to the board by counsel, it's much appreciated if you would copy the other counsel involved. Thank you.
I have, I do have one question for the engineer. And do we have any, um, analysis of the outflow water? What the outflow water is going to be comprised of? It's 35,000 gallons. It's going to go into the groundwater. Do we have, um, any type of chemical grade? I'll give it to Aldo first then.
These are the last, uh, four or five months of lab results.
Okay. On, on, on another similar...
The sim, the system we're putting in this one.
Okay.
DEC was present on the last one on November 1st.
Okay.
Very, very happy with the system.
Great.
I have more copies if you want.
Yeah, I, oh, thanks. Maybe one for Kathy's office.
I included the, um, Browners. That's pretty important. And you can compare them to the, the lab results.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
You should get them stamped and put them...
Yeah.
You want to stamp it?
I can. I don't have a stamp that I can write on.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Site plan review.
Thank you.
The bond, we're just about...
Actually, we got the text of the resolution. I just conferred that we...
Sorry. Did we get adjourned?
No, you have to adjourn it.
Okay, sorry. So...
I'll make a motion to adjourn for all purposes the, um... Application. Yep, I'm, I'm just looking for it.
Pelosi?
Uh, Pelosi, Ioto, and Rollar, um, to the January 2014 meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
We got the text agreed upon, but in discussing this with Diane today, the issue came up as to whether or not there was a bond outstanding. I conferred with Mr. Bregman, who's counsel for the applicant, and he believes that the, the bond has been fixed by the trustees and submitted. So I just want to confirm that before we delete that from the, uh, agenda. So we'll keep it off for one more month. And in the meantime, I'll submit a memo to the, uh, board that, that, what the status of the bond is.
I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant that the bond of Southampton be adjourned for all purposes to the January 2014 meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have adjourned the 550 and 554 Hill Street application, but Kathy, you received a response from, um, State. What did you want to...
I don't think it's there.
Comment on that, or should we just hold that till the January meeting?
No, the applicant is in here. Probably best. Uh, it is, it will be in the file, so... And I did send the copies to the applicant and, um, to the applicant's attorney and consultant.
So since it's already been adjourned, we don't need to adjourn it again. Gem Powell, 161 Powell Avenue.
This is something we talked about at the work session. You may remember that the issue was that the village, actually, the highway department had found that it was unnecessary to construct additional curbing in front of this project. And we had submitted a revised site plan showing that curbing eliminated with, just with a curb return where the access is. I think the, the task then would be to, as a resolution, amending the form of site plan approval to delete that requirement. And if appropriate, to agree to reduce the amount of the performance bond that we'd already posted to take into account the, uh, cost of the curbing. But that summarizes it in a nutshell.
Just need Aldo to look at the, um, actual connection here. Um, and as far as the amount of deduction, it was a $50,000 bond, I believe, right?
I think it was, yeah.
Is he on the 550, yeah?
That was adjourned.
Excuse me?
Yeah, okay.
All right. What we posted it for was the provision of that curbing. There was some sidewalk, yeah. And that's a, it's a sidewalk, which is still included, but there, no curbing. Right, from there. So we...
So what happened? So at that point, then you'd have to get that bond amount approved by the trustees, and then they'd have to revise the amount. Has he already posted the bond?
Yeah.
He's already posted it.
I think he was kind of hoping he'd get it reduced a little bit.
Two more technical words, just to...
But at the very least, we'd hope we, you'd agree to, that the site plan could be modified to take that requirement out.
Was the, uh, work on the curbing a line item in the bond?
I believe it was. It was one of the conditions in the site plan approval. That was one of the, I, I don't know that there was an actual number.
If there wasn't an actual number, then there's going to be, you'd need to submit another, uh, quotation or two with regard to the work to be done less the, less this work.
I can do that.
So you might want to check. If it was a line item, then obviously that, it, the board can consider reducing it by that amount. But if it was an unfixed amount, then it needs to be broken down and specified.
I think it was a lump sum.
Yeah, then you're going to need a, um...
Sorry.
Then you need to revise the quotations.
See right there? That's it. That's the new quotation. That's high end. What's in there? So it's rising to here.
Looking at the curves, the existing curves kind of fades away before it hits the road. So simply to bring that curve around so that it's paved there. And that should, that should be the case on both sides.
You need to note, you know, to tie into existing curve.
Yeah, probably can cover it with a...
Let's see. It doesn't look as if there's any curbing here at all.
It's not, it's not designed for...
It's a gas...
We had this discussion in November.
You just want to have a note that this will hit the edge of the paper, is that?
Yeah.
I might as well do it on both sides.
I think he's just wanting to get his money back.
But otherwise, I think it's... That's not our problem.
Well, the bond is.
Right, but, but the, the adjusting the money is the trustee's.
So now if that's something we can act on now, whether you want me to submit a map, I mean, that'd just be a note on the map that will do that.
Well, if you're, if you would like the reduction in the bond, I would say we wait and do it all at once.
Okay, we can do that. So presumably if I do that, we can wrap it up at the next meeting. Thanks very much.
I'll make a motion to adjourn Gem Powell LLC to the, for all purposes to the...
At the request of the applicant.
At the request of the applicant, to the January 2014 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Farrington Close condo, 520 Hampton Road.
Good evening. Robert Faschetti, Fernando Faschetti, 320 Hampton Road, Southampton. So I think we covered some ground at the work session. And some of the things that you had asked for, I may be a little shy of the, the usual 10 copies, but I do have pictures of the existing atrium, so you can get a feel for what's there. And then the architect's plans as far as what's going to be on the inside, and just, uh, a rendering of, so you can see how the roof will change, um, because that's really the only exterior visible change. So...
Thank you, Rob.
Is this a, is this a project?
This is, um...
Of the home of the...
Yeah, we looked at it at the work session. Farrington Close, they've got an interior atrium. They're going to close in an interior atrium.
Yeah, I understand that. I have a further question. It's been already done, I think, on number 21.
Right.
But I was wondering, is this going to occur in all of the associated buildings? Does the owner have the right to reject it or accept it?
Uh, well, it's, this is not something that is going to be required of the owners. Uh, the, there are six buildings in Farrington Close, and, uh, each building has between three and four units. And it's the end units on each building. So it would be a total of 12, 12 units that have these. They're all the, the end cap units. Um, I represent Joan Khan, the unit, uh, unit number 16 owner. And really her and my only concern is unit number 16, but the board had asked, instead of reviewing this in the future 12 times, to really apply, uh, for, for the whole 12 units.
Global approval or not.
Exactly.
So this is for one application, for one building out of the 23?
Mm-hmm. But we're looking at...
But if we approve it, it would...
Looking at making it a...
If we approve it.
Like a blanket approval for all 12. Unfortunately, just by virtue of being the first applicant...
Well, I'm trying to find out, is that a blanket approval? But the choice and decision whether or not to go forward with the project is up to each individual owner.
Yes, yes. The, the condo is not required.
They can accept it or reject it.
Exactly, yes.
If we approve this one, that would indicate that, that would be the same approval for the balance.
Right, if they cho, choose to bring it. Yes, my understanding would be a standing approval for future, uh, for future owners to take advantage of.
And they can all say, thank you very much.
Hopefully, yeah. Hopefully, yes, hopefully.
Send them chocolates at Christmas.
Is there a letter in the file from the homeowners association approving all this?
No, but I will have that.
I think it's, it's...
Yes, sir. Is the letter in the file from the homeowners association unanimous?
I'm sorry, I, there is no letter yet, but the board, the board, the condo board supports it. I've spoken to them, I just don't have the actual letter yet.
I mean, this is interior space, that doesn't affect anybody, really.
If you get the letter, I'm going to...
Me too, gun on the thing.
This is an application for one unit.
No, it's not. It's an application for all potential units.
If they want it.
Yes, but you're approving all of them.
Yeah, okay. So the decision to improve it or not improve it is up to each individual owner.
Right, at any time in the future, without coming back to the board.
Right.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, too, if he gets a letter from the condo association.
Would you be able to condition an approval on the letter from the condo association?
We'd like to see the letter.
Okay, all right, I see.
Probably notarized.
Okay.
No matter what, you would be subject to a voting permit.
Right, yes, understandably, yes.
And I think, I think a building permit may have been issued in the past for...
The one that didn't have our approval, so.
One of the, yes. Was able to squeeze mine.
Does this have to have a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So in that, in that case, that should be scheduled for January, I would think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So far as your file, is it within 200 feet of it?
200, 200.
It's going to have to go to everybody in the condominium?
Yes. Okay.
I would say it's, yeah, so that's, there's 30 minutes there, so...
Is it 200 feet, not just from unit 16, but from...
Property line, right.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else I can provide to...
I think you got it, Rob.
Yep. Great. I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for the purposes of a public hearing to the...
Adjourn the matter for all purposes to January and also schedule a public hearing.
Schedule of a public hearing, okay. On the Farrington Close condo application.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Bennett feels that he did have to hold it, so...
That was, that's Rooney.
Right.
That's already been done, yeah.
It's already been done. So that said, there's nothing left on the agenda?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
You have a minute approval.
You have minutes, minutes approvals. Minutes, I think.
I haven't read the other ones yet. I haven't read the 23.
So why don't we do the approval in January? I haven't read them.
Adjourn it, then just close your meeting.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn the minute approval until the January meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye, and I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll see everybody next year.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.